Rahman Uhim, Rabbis Tathri, Vayyasirli Amri, Pahlul Akta Tambil Lisaney Afkaboufali. Ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum, Raqatullah, Wa Raqatu, and very good morning, good afternoon, good evening to all of you. Depending on which part of the world you are joining in. Today's session of public hearing is on an important exposure draft of our financial accounting standard. The topic that we are going to discuss is on investment distributions. And the concept that that we want to like, you know, you know, you you we are, we want to discuss. Need some initial, you know, some initial clarification with regard to the scope and the functions. As of now, we have our financial accounting standard number fourteen on investment funds. That standard was developed nearly twenty years back. I exactly can't recall that in the date, but nearly roughly twenty years or so. In the meanwhile, there have been lot of updates. For example, international financial reporting standards have changed in between. A O P financial accounting standard number one has changed, A O P's conceptual framework for financial thing has changed. The industry has evolved in a manner that there are lot of new types of investment entities. In place which were not common at that point of time. So considering all these things, it was a conclusion of our financial accounting standards revision program. In which we performed a proper survey and some roundtables to identify which of the A O P's standards needed a revision. And obviously, we had given some priorities to some of the items. This standard was kept in, it was not kept on low priority. But to be honest, due to some some delays in the research and development work. And now thanks to our consultant brother Faisal Afzal who helped us greatly on development of this one. But due to some lack of expertise and to some extent priority on the other. Type of institutions being more particularly the banking and the Kafal industry. The the attention on the research and development in this area was not enough. And that caused some delay in development of this exposure draft. However, as of now, we believe that this is high time that we come up with a new standard. And that new standard should be and not confined only to the investment funds or mutual funds. But rather it should be taking care of other type of investment institutions as well. Because for for the normal application of A O P financial accounting standards, our normal standards normally are focused on. Banking sector primarily. And everything to the bank, applicable to the banking sector may not be equally applied. On all types of Islamic financial institutions. So considering that factor, it is important. That we come up with appropriate principles of financial reporting for the investment distribution. Let me be honest on one part. This is something that I have personally mentioned. At public forums and we have discussed this thing in our respective accounting and governance boards as well. That the Islamic finance solution, a set of solution that we provide. As a replacement to the conventional financial system is not confined to banking. Or rather Islamic banking itself has a huge potential and a huge service to do to the Islamic financial system. But considering the true nature of Islamic finance. Which promotes risk-taking, which promotes entrepreneurship, which promotes participatory investments, et cetera. The real Islamic finance solutions lie in Islamic capital markets. And now with the new technologies coming up in Islamic fintech. So if you ask me. That the growth of Islamic finance industry, are you satisfied with that? Again, as a humble student of Islamic finance, I would say. That the growth that we are having on the banking side is good, although it can, it could have been more. But it is good, Alhamdulillah, we can see good improvement and good growth going on. Qualitative improvement is needed at it, on the other hand, for which we are doing our part as standard setting. But the the qualitative growth on Islamic banking is good in most of the markets. But if you ask me, are you overall satisfied with the growth of Islamic finance, I would say no. And not because I'm not satisfied with the growth of Islamic banking, but I believe that the growth on the Takaful side. And more importantly, the growth on the Islamic capital side market side is not enough. It's not appropriate to the level that we feel that we are coming closer, any closer to the. To the dream of Islamic financial system. Even if not standalone Islamic financial system means that without any involvement of Fribah or others. But even coming close to that, we feel that this is something that needs, we need to work on. And Islamic investment institutions, particularly the Islamic funds are most important part of that. It is also important to understand that there are certain markets where the real investment opportunities in form of banks are not available. Islamic banks do not operate or are not of a size that they can provide the proper investment solution. To Islamic, to Sharia conscious investors. Particularly in the western world, particularly in some non-Muslim markets, we can take example. Of the United States, some of the European countries, Canada, India. We can take some examples where these are huge economies. And Muslim population is entrusted in having investment opportunities. But their investment opportunities are not available according to their needs. And this is again where a reason that these markets are more suitable for promotion of Islamic capital markets. Because having Sharia compliant capital market instruments does not require that sort of regulatory. Requirements and that sort of capital requirements which is needed to constitute a bank in those markets. And in some markets actually, an Islamic financial institution in the name of Islamic financial institution is not allowed at all. So in that situation, it gives us a great opportunity. That Islamic investment entities can can chip in. And take that opportunity to provide investment Sharia compliant investment opportunities. To the Sharia conscious investors in those markets. Not only this, we also feel that there are some of the Islamic financial markets. Where we are having having access liquidity situation for Islamic banks and financial institutions. Particularly in the G C C market. And at times, they need to find avenues out of their respective countries. And those investments are being routed to some of the, some even even at times some of the non-Muslim countries. Which gives creates a great opportunity. For Muslim countries as well and non-Muslim countries to come up with the capital market investment instruments to fill in the gap. This was just a brief about how we like, you know, feel the need of this one. So our at our end, we want to promote all of it. And for that promotion. It is important that we come up with the with the robust standard for the financial reporting on Islamic of in respect of Islamic. Investment distributions and Islamic funds. And that was the reason that we decided to revise and improve this standard. Just a request like always, whenever you feel like you know that you have a question, please feel free. Please just drop a message in the question and answer tab. We'll see if time is permitting us, giving permitting us to. Allow people to speak. But since it's just a two hour session. I doubt that it will be like, you know, there will be enough time to allow you guys to speak. So just use the Q and A tab. Again, I request that please don't put the questions in the queue, in the in the chat window. Please use the Q and A tab because because it will be difficult for me to handle the questions there. Secondly. Anything that you put in the Q and A tab, we just keep a record of it to make sure that it is taken to the. Respective working group and board and your comments are provided. Please feel free. This is, this has to be an interactive session. So please feel free to interact whenever you feel there is something that needs clarification. Now with your permission, I'll share my screen. Some brief has been provided, but I'll take you to the significant changes. The one of the significant changes from the previous, the most significant change from the previous standard FAS fourteen is. That the scope of the standard has been expanded to include different types of Islamic investment institutions. In addition to Islamic investment funds, while the earlier one was focusing on new Islamic funds. The second is about the the approach. Earlier standard was a standalone standard, which means that FAS fourteen was the only standard applicable on Islamic investment funds. Which allowed you to refer to some of the product standards with respect of some accounting treatment. But you you but that standard itself was like, you know, standalone standard. In line with the new approach that we have, our financial accounting standard number one, if you see under I F R S. The I S one or now I F R S eighteen, that is primarily one standard applicable on all type of entities. When we developed the new financial accounting standard one, we took the same opportunity to align all the requirements related to all type of Islamic financial institution in one place. In FAS one. However, the FAS one has, the part one of FAS one. Applies on all type of Islamic financial institution or any institution that follows A O P financial accounting standards. On the other hand, part B of FAS one applies to Islamic banks only. The same approach we followed for Takaful where FAS forty-two is to be read in addition to and in conjunction with FAS one. Which means that the basic definitions, et cetera, and the primary statements, some of the things that are defined in the. In FAS one shall still be applicable on FAS, on Takaful institutions following FAS forty-two. In this standard also, we have taken the same approach that this standard is to be read in conjunction with FAS one. Which means that definitions and terminologies, et cetera, that are there are aligned. And some of the things are not overlapping. So it is to be read with FAS one and it's aligned with FAS one. So the definition and terminology have been modified, post-referenced and improved. Certain presentation requirements or et cetera for the earlier standard have been taken away. Concept of cash equivalent value has been removed because cash equivalent value was a confusing term. Now we have aligned to the terms that are more applicable like fair value and et cetera in the. In the accounting fraternity and as in our standards. The concept financial reporting principle for quasi-equity has been introduced to earlier, earlier standard was not having this one. Financial reporting principles in respect of I triple I's comprised of more than one virtual entity or sub-fund have been prescribed means that there can be a triple I that is. Islamic investment institution that can have multiple sub-funds or multiple virtual entities within that. And the concept of NAF has been introduced to and and sorry, NAF differential has been introduced. Because in the open-ended funded funds at time, there are front-end like front-end adjustments for for NAF. These are the things that are like, you know, allowed in open-ended funds. For frequent entries and exits and this issue has been addressed for the first time. The predecessor standard including certain governance requirements and additionally certain requirements related reporting to stakeholders which are not part of accounting. And financial reporting. At that time, A O P was. Having actually one board only and that board was combining some of the things. So the Sharia board report, appointment of Sharia Subway Z board and having a. Having having some of the reports, some of the reporting requirement that are typically part of the annual report and not part of the financial reporting. All these were included in earlier FAS fourteen, these all have been removed because that is the subject matter of respective governance standards. Then this is very important point that this standard clarifies that. Triple I due to its unique business model and intention of investment is and shall be exempt from equity method of accounting or consolidation. This is the investment entity exemption thing that we call under I F R S. Which was not present in A O P's consolidation standard. So this is an exemption which certain institutions were having confusion about. So now we have clarified that issue through this standard. Okay, we have couple of questions now coming up. Brother Mohammed Abdul Halim has raised a question, what is the meaning of a standalone standard? Just to clarify. That in that our current FAS fourteen primarily is a complete standard or right sort of you can say it's a. Sunrise financial reporting for framework for Islamic investment funds in itself. So it is not to be read in conjunction with FAS one, Kukun or some other standard. Although it may allow you to refer to some of the other standards related to product accounting. So so while you apply FAS fourteen, you can refer to some other phases, but there is. No overlapping of FAS, FAS, FAS one or any other standard. So that's why we are saying that if a regulator. Is adopting financial accounting standards for you from A O P for its investment funds, mutual funds, et cetera. So currently they can adopt only FAS fourteen, which technically covers almost all the accounting requirements. Which are very brief at this point of time, applicable to mutual funds and Islamic investment funds. Now what we are talking about is that we now have a more comprehensive and robust framework. So that does not comprise of a single standard and we did not want to repeat what is contained in different standards of A O P. Which means that if you adopt our new FAS fourteen, whatever the number would be. You'll have to adopt FAS one, A O P conceptual framework and other relevant standards where the FAS fourteen, new FAS fourteen will be referring to like. For some accounting under FAS thirty-three for Sukuk and investment issue, et cetera, and certain other things. So considering that it provides a more robust and comprehensive framework. But it does not repeat what is contained in other standards. Which means that it's part of the integrated framework and not alone a small framework by itself. Thank you very much for this question. I believe it is clear, but if still somebody has a more specific question. Please feel free to ask on this part. Thank you very much, brother Mohammed Abdul Halim for being with us and for raising this very pertinent question. There is an anonymous attendee having a question and that is my request all the time that please always mention your name and if possible your institution name as well. So that all your comments are recorded with like, you know, with your with your respective names. What are the new types of investment which have been developed recently leading to replace FAS fourteen investment funds? Investment funds was talking about investment funds only, which means technically it is mainly applicable for the mutual funds. Although now Islamic REITs, Real Estate Investment Trusts are becoming common in some countries. There are some venture capital funds, there are some private equity funds, there are some sovereign wealth funds. They are also at times Sharia compliant or have Sharia compliant funds by themselves. There are institutions like Islamic Corporation for Development I C D that is part of the I S T B group. Which is technically a. Technically an investment institution but not an investment fund by itself. Similarly, for the parts, for the venture capital and the and the private equity which we want to promote as a true essence of Islamic finance. At times the entity itself is also an investment entity and at times it creates funds also. So the current FAS fourteen is not addressing all of it. This is a quick answer to your question, but when we go through and to the scope and everything, I think I'll be able to explain it more, Insha Allah. Brother Mohammed Saiful Azad has raised a question, how does the revised FAS expand the scope of financial reporting for I S beyond what was covered in FAS fourteen standard for investment funds? Just allow me to come to the frame, to the scope in this and I'll explain that. Thank you very much, brother Mohammed Saiful Azad for being with us. And the second question by brother Mohammed Saiful Azad is. What significant modifications have been made in revised FAS regarding the presentation of financial statement particularly in relation to. Portfolio investment principles and financing? The portfolio investment statement, et cetera, that were required earlier were not part of primary statement. So they are now moved to the notes. Some of the requirements are moved to the annual report that is a government standard requirement. The standard brings the financial reporting closer to the financial reporting under FAS one. And closer to the financial reporting under I F R S. Just to clarify and I believe that I've repeated it many times, some of you are like, you know, very familiar with the A O P's financial accounting standard setting strategy. Whereby we develop standards where there is value addition. Now the value addition applies when. We have number one, either a Sharia issue which impacts a unique accounting aspect. For example, Sharia doesn't allow you to combine two contracts in one. So in that situation, we do not combine the accounting effect of the two in one, rather we keep each one of them to be considered. A separate instrument in line with Sharia requirements. Just an example. Similarly, we address the unique business model of Islamic financial institutions and Islamic finance transactions. At times, their characterization according to their unique business model is different and that we address. So overall, we are aligning the things with I F R S and generally accepted accounting principles. So one of the aspect of this financial reporting improvement is. That we are bringing our financial statement, overall primary statements closer to. What is common in the in the general finance industry that is through I F R S. This is again, when you go through the the statement, you will find that the accounting treatments. And accounting presentation are brought more in line with FAS one, which is again, as I mentioned earlier. Are aligned with I F R S and other generally accepted accounting principles in general. There is a question from anonymous attendee, how to identify definitions which have been modified and improved? I think all, almost all definitions have been improved, almost all. Improved as compared to FAS fourteen, maybe not improved as compared to FAS one and the new framework. Brother Saiful Azad has a comment and I think that various type of Islamic investment institution, that is correct and as I explained and I'll come to the to the scope and we'll clarify it more. There is a comment from the Umar Khalif, how can we create relief for businesses and institutions which are suffering, struggling with financial reporting for fintech tech innovation? Businesses are in need of constant investment to keep up innovation tech, innovation or technology which are part of everyday life. Your question is good. But I I don't have any single answer to this one and this is not that much relevant to this standard, but let me put very quickly. That with the growth of size of businesses and with the growth in the complexity of the businesses. It is becoming more and more inevitable to embrace technology for the internal financial reporting purposes. That is part one. That is the reporting purpose systems. The second part is that when you come into competition with the new market players. And when you have to compete with the market, you need to have business motive systems that are actually able to. Provide financial services to the to the customers, investors, depositors, et cetera. On a competitive basis. So that is something that to be honest. In both ways, like on the financial reporting side as well as for offering of business services side. You need to embrace technology to keep yourself, you know, abreast with whatever is happening. So honestly, the times have changed and with the changing time, everybody has to embrace technology. At least according to the resources that they can afford. Otherwise, there is a risk that they may be even getting out of business. So that is my quick answer to that. Honestly, don't have like, you know, any for anything else to say except for that at times. If you don't change yourself with changing times, you are out of business. Kodak is one example, like you know, there are like, you know, there are. A lot of taxi companies, et cetera, that have been learned out of business because of Uber. So lot of things have changed and all these things will be like, you know, continuing the same direction, the technology will be changing the way things are done. And you need to embrace to that. Brother Saiful Azad has another point, how does the standard show truthful and fearful financial reporting? I think this need to be read, I will will come to that. Like, you know, you will, you need to like, you know, maybe more specific. Your point is very general, the whole standard has the same objective of aligning the financial reporting in line with Sharia. So you have to be brother Mohammed Saiful Azad, you have to be more specific on that question. Number two, what are the specific inclusion mentioned in scope? Again, I think, I think let me, let me go to the to the point because you are just putting a question that is. Very specific to the scope itself and we need to reach the scope point, then I can be able to answer you better. A question again from the Umar Khalif. Also, how we can make relief for investors who require financial reporting by growing business and keep integrity and public honesty while experiencing growth? Honestly, the question is not clear to me, what does relief means here? Honestly, can you kindly clarify your question here more that what is the meaning of relief here? Because honestly, this question is a bit confusing for me, my apologies for my misunderstanding. So kindly, can you explain it better? Brother Musa Kabir has put a question, it is brother Musa Kabir from S C C Nigeria. Welcome, my dear brother and thanks for you and your team to be part of this event. Please, I need more explanation on the removal of cash equivalent value concept. Brother Musa, by including in the principle of quasi-equity, no, 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 no. Brother Musa, don't mix up quasi-equity with with cash equivalent value. Cash equivalent value was a term which we were using, I F R S does not use normally cash equivalent value, it has used cash equivalent value. In case of one, one or one or two very specific standards in the past. Now the term used is normally fair value. And fair value is the term which has been used by A O P's other standards. So the cash equivalent value term has been changed to fair value. Am I clear, brother? Which means that technically in most situation, cash equivalent value and fair value will be the same in most situations. But yes, in rare circumstances, it can be different, but the approach that we wanted was. That we are aligning with I F R S and we are aligning with FAS one. I F R S and FAS one are using the term fair value, which is well defined in A O P framework and in FAS one. So from that perspective, we are aligning with that. The quasi-equity part, my dear brother, is not to be confused with cash equivalent value. Quasi-equity I will come and explain. We have used quasi-equity in two different aspects. I'll explain that, Insha Allah. So please allow me some time on this. Thank you very much all of you for putting your questions. And let me take you through the standard, some of the questions that I did not answer will be clarified in next couple of paragraphs related to objective and scope. The objective of this standard is to set out the principles of financial reporting. For Islamic investment institutions, that is the first change as we discuss, instead of Islamic funds, we are talking about Islamic investment institutions and what is that? We need to go for the scope and the definition for that. Particularly prescribing overall requirements for the presentation, minimum contents and recommended structure of their financial statements in a manner that facilitates truthful and fair presentation in line with. Sharia principles and rules. The standard shall apply to all Islamic investment institutions. This standard shall also apply to employee retirement benefit funds managed by Islamic financial institutions for the benefit of their own employees in addition to the requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. Now, generally accepted accounting principles, we have defined a hierarchy in FAS one and in the framework about. Selection of accounting policy. So normally, the I F R S that is applicable is I S twenty-six on. Employee benefit funds. So there was a question for the board and this is something on which we would love to have your more specific answers. More specific comments and particularly this comment is not from the capital market institutions only or special institution only. Because this is something that may impact all Islamic Islamic financial institution, including banks. So this is a very specific comment that we need. We said that you apply I S twenty-six, continue to apply I S twenty-six. Insofar as there is no Sharia compliance issue. However, we said that the requirements of this one should be applicable in addition to that. Which means that in particular, the disclosure requirements in respect of nature of underlying asset and their respective compliance with Sharia principles and rules shall be applicable. So I am Islamic bank, I have a pension fund or a provident fund or a gratuity fund for my employees. I continue following I S twenty-six. But I also need to follow the requirements of this system. I continue following I S twenty six, but I also need to follow the requirements of this standard. To the extent of clarifying the nature of investments. And whether or not those investments are Sharia compliant. Now, there were a couple of questions in front of the board that I would like to present to you as well, and would love to have your comments today and later in writing. That what do you think that shall this be applicable as it is to Islamic financial institutions managed retirement benefit funds? Then the problem is that there are some requirements related to the, you know, the. In case of defined contribution plan, it will be all okay, but in case of defined benefit plan, there are additional disclosures. With regard to the total liability, the vested liability, et cetera. So those are the things which are more specific to the actual valuation report and all that on the Islamic. On the, on the employee benefit, particularly the employee defined benefit schemes. Considering that, we said that we do not want to interfere into the domain of I S twenty six. Rather, we keep I S twenty six applicable, we simply say that the requirements related to the nature of asset and the Sharia principles and rules. Compliance of those assets should be applicable on this one also. Like it should be taken from this one and applied on that. So if you are an Islamic financial institution, any type of Islamic financial institution, having a retirement benefit fund. You apply I S twenty six because our framework allows following I F R S or generally accepted accounting principles. Till the time they are not against the framework, till the time they are not against the Sharia principles and rules. So you can apply that, but you need to have this disclosure requirement, et cetera, in addition to that. This is our approach, but this is one thing that is going to impact all institutions about disclosures and all that. So this is one place where we request specific comments. This standard shall not be applicable on off-balance sheet assets under management that do not take form of a separate legal entity. And which are subject to the financial reporting requirements prescribed in O F I S, respective O F I S. That is FAS forty six now, that is FAS forty six. It was earlier E D, but now it is final FAS forty six, Sister Sarah, Sister Hora make a note of it. Because once when we issued it, it was an exposure draft, but now it is a final standard, so we need to put the number of FAS forty six. Now, what we need to, what we need to explain here? There is Islamic bank, it created a restricted investment account. That restricted investment account is not ring fenced and it is not taking form of a legal entity. It is an investment fund, but it is not taking form of a legal entity and it is not ring fenced properly. It means that you will continue to apply FAS forty six on that fund. Which means that it will be considered off-balance sheet asset under management. On the other hand, let's take two examples. So first example is, I know Assalam Bank. Al Baraka Bank, they have restricted investment account, they function like an investment fund. But they are not ring fenced in that way and they are not separate legal entities. So these are accounted for off-balance sheet man, assets under management. Let's take another example, for example, Pakistan Mizan Bank has a subsidiary Mizan Investment Funds. Mizan Investment Management, Mizan Investment Management has Islamic funds. That takes form of a legal entity through a separate trust deed and all that. And that is considered to be like a separate, like you know, enlisted entity at times. Considering that takes form of a separate legal entity and is properly ring fenced, that will be subject to this standard. Okay, I I hope I'm clear, but still I'll I'll welcome any questions or further clarification of this part. And I think it partially explains the question by brother Seiful Azad, I think he had this question. The second part is investment institutions taking the form of a work from Sharia perspective, which are subject to financial reporting requirements as prescribed in respective O F I S. That is FAS thirty seven, any investment institution that takes form of a work. That where the investment, that is technically an investment entity. A lot of you will find they are technically an investment entity. But being a work, they are subject to financial reporting under FAS thirty seven. And not financial reporting under this standard. Although they have characteristics similar to an investment entity, technically they may be considered an investment entity. Third, investment funds, for example, parchment investment fund managed by Takafal institution, which are subject to financial reporting requirements. As prescribed in relevant O F I S, FAS forty two and forty three. That apply on parchment investment funds of the Takafal entity. So normally P I F will be subject to accounting under that. Normally, P I F is not a separate legal ring-fenced entity, but even if it is a separate ring-fenced entity. We believe it will be subject to this one. I think sister, sister Zahra, sorry, Sister Sarah, please make a note of it in two E D. I think bracket is not, is missing, although we will change it to, the beginning of the bracket is missing here. And and here, the numbering is coming as A, but I believe it should be C. I hope this is a mistake only in the presentation, not in the standard itself, just make a note of it, please. Now coming, I want to complete the scope part before taking the comments, I can see people have raised lot of questions here. So I'll come to the questions, but first let me have a quick, like you know, complete, quickly complete this section on scope. This standard shall be read in conjunction with the requirements of part one applicable to all institutions of FAS one. Whereby the provision of the standard shall be considered along with the requirements prescribed about the general presentation and disclosure of the financial statements of all I F Is. However, the specific provisions of this standard shall apply in case of a conflict between the requirements of the two standards. This is about what I already explained, that this is not a standalone standard, it's part of the O F I S framework. You cannot say that, okay, only this standard alone is enough to address all the investment entities need. Because investment entities are very vast in nature and there is no point in repeating things that are contained in different standards. So an investment entity needs to account for the Sukuk and shares, et cetera. So you do not need to repeat whole of FAS thirty three here. General presentation related, some specific requirements are to be here. But not everything that is there in the FAS one. So otherwise, maybe we need to come up with a combination of FAS one, FAS thirty three, FAS thirty. And maybe some other phases as well. So technically, it would be a futile exercise to like put everything there. We just clarified that the framework, a framework, the FAS one, this is standard. FAS thirty three and certain other standards as applicable, they combined provide the overall accounting treatment. Which we believe as a standard setting body, we do not need to repeat in every standard again and again. This standard shall apply only to standalone financial statements of triple I's. And a triple I shall not paper consolidated financial statement in respect of any entity that it controls nor shall it apply. The equity method of accounting in respect of any entity over which it exercises significant influence. The existence of control or exercise of significant influence by an I I I over another entity may at times. Require a reassessment of the business model of the I I I and hence applicability of the standard on such I I I. So let's take an example of a venture capital company. If the venture capital company is a triple I, meeting the definition of an investment institution under this. It means that it is investing in other entities, not taking part of that business. But rather as a venture capitalist. As a venture capitalist, that entity is concerned not with primarily with the operations. But with the investment results, that is the main difference. For this, we need, we'll have to go to the definition of triple I, let me read the definition of triple I. This might be very important that like, you know, we understand this whole concept. Islamic investment institutions are such institutions as I F Is, so they have to be I F Is. Taking the juristic form of corporate entities, trusts or other financially and legally independent institutions. Which mean that it can be a co-company, it can be a corporate entity, it can be a trust, it can be other financially or legally independent institution. Which are established with an investment motive, that is to invest in a pool of Sharia compliant assets and earn returns on investments. Without any expressed intention to exercise control over the businesses underlying such investments. So I invest in a company, not with the purpose of controlling and getting into operations of that. But with the intention of getting returns from that investment. And that is the reason that all triple I's are supposed to have an exemption from equity method of accounting and consolidation. Because control is never the intention. And on the other side, now this is the asset side, but on the other side. Involve investors contributing to the equity or quasi-equity of the triple I and at times a combination thereof. Which represent ownership claims to the underlying assets and entitlement to the respective shares and profits or losses. Which means that it is an investment model, on the investor's side, we are getting investment funding. They are also having an investment motive, not the control motive, not the operation, operational business motive. And that is something, because this is something that is applicable on Islamic mutual fund. Again, you have a, you have a investment portfolio, shares, Sukuk, et cetera. And you never intend to control the assets, like you know, control the underlying businesses, taking part into their operation, et cetera. You are concerned about the investment returns coming from that. And on the investor's side, you are concerned, you 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 have a set of investors who invest as equity or quasi-equity. Who are entitled to the returns on the underlying asset and the residual interest on the underlying assets. This explanation is important, explanation, triple I's include open-ended and closed-ended mutual funds. Voluntary pension schemes, real estate investment trusts and funds. Venture capital institutions as well as funds, venture capital funds. Private equity institutions as well as private equity funds, sovereign wealth funds, family office, family office investment institutions and funds, et cetera. Subject to. These are Islamic financial institutions. Now Islamic financial institution definition include that they operate in line with Sharia principles and rules. So technically, let me go to the definition of Islamic financial institutions as well. Islamic financial institution is defined in our different standards. I think sister Sarah, maybe, maybe we need to come up with either the definition of Islamic financial institution here. Or maybe we need to put the Sharia compliance with Sharia principles and rules part here. We are, we are, we are clear about with the Sharia compliant assets or returns, but I think we need to talk about the overall Sharia principles and rules compliance. We discovered through the definition of I F I here, but I think we might need to take some more consideration on clarifying this part. This is my personal view that we can note for the working role. Now, with this, I'll go back to the scope and let's conclude on the scope with addressing the questions that are there on the scope. So. So on the exclusion part, I think I have clarified brother Muhammad Seiful Azad to you, so I hope it is clear. The, that's the, the another point that was from. Cause equity, I'll come back brother Musa Kabir, we have comment from brother Juma Habib, Habib Lai. My apologies if I mispronounce any name, because people join us from so many different countries, so many different places. That at times we are unable to even pronounce the names, my apologies to you and to anybody else. If I mispronounce your name inadvertently, so it looks like brother Juma Habib Lai. Assalamualaikum Abdulwakatuh, what are the major difference between O F I S accounting standards and the I F R S? He is also from Nigeria. Brother, welcome and and in a nutshell, we are going to publish, Insha Allah, this year. A short report and probably will be coming up with a, with a, with a session, with a training session on the key differences as well. We have one published, published book already, I F R S and Sharia based reporting, which is available on your free website. That can provide you detailed guidance on that part. A detailed report, Insha Allah, is expected by end of this year, Insha Allah, on the key differences between O F I S and I F R S standards. However, in a nutshell, if you allow me, I I would say that we try to align with I F R S. Except for where there is a specific Sharia issue, where are the specific Sharia issues? I think you can find the examples in the O F I S framework, where there is a whole chapter, I believe, chapter seven on identification of the Sharia rules. That are, that are translated into accounting rules, like for example, Sharia does not allow you to trade debts. So any established receivable or payable should not be discounted or should not be accruing any return. This is a accounting rule. Sharia does not allow you to combine two contracts in one. So we do not combine the accounting effect of two standards, two, two accounting, two contracts in the same way. These are some examples, my dear brother, there are a lot of other discussion points, again, it's not the subject today. So I suggest you to read the book that is available and well, Insha Allah, we'll be coming up with some training sessions shortly on that. Keep in contact with our, 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 our capacity building and regulatory capacity building department with that, for, for that purpose. And probably by end of the year, we'll be coming up with one report and Insha Allah, next year we'll be coming up with a more comprehensive book on that topic. Thank you very much. There is a comment from Sister Sayyidah Farah, Assalamualaikum Abdulwakatuh, I'm Sayyidah Farah from Karachi. A B C Fian, South Pakistan, Certified Agriculture Value Chain Financing, Real Estate Economies and Financial Consultant. Welcome sister, how would we apply and use it in agriculture financing, real estate finance, like farm financing, development of financial institution? M R F Is and livestock financing, because in, in our last project, we had to scaling and sustaining. Which were identified and mapping, can we, can we apply green policies and finance, thank you. Real pleasure to have you here sister and I think these are very good points that you have raised. The solution to most of the agriculture products, agriculture financing needs are available within Islamic finance. Maybe not all solutions would be coming within Islamic investment institutions, some of them might be coming into Islamic social finance institutions. And Islamic, the development finance institution as well as the Islamic commercial banks, et cetera. But I think there are a lot of opportunities available, there are some examples in some of the countries that are also available. In case of Sudan, Iran, we have some good examples, but this is, I I would say that Islamic investment institution is not primarily a solution for that. But yes, there can be Sukuk also and there can be green Sukuk also to support that part, that is part of Islamic capital markets. I think it would be a good idea that we can have some offline discussion on this point. Because I'm personally very much like, you know, interested in the topics related to the. To the, to the agriculture finance based on Islamic finance. So we can have some later, some offline discussion on that part. But yes, lot of opportunities are available within even the investment institution part. Particularly, the venture capital and private equity can be utilized greatly to develop the, develop the. The, 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 the agriculture projects. Including particularly those that require some investment in infrastructure, technology, et cetera. Similarly, even sovereign wealth fund at time actually invest into, 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 into this. Particularly considering the current challenges with regard to the food security that certain countries are facing. From that perspective, the sovereign wealth funds also can be investing in some of the agriculture projects. Like you know, this is a need of the time to create a, the supply chain through proper investments. So I think there is huge and great opportunity in this part, but further discussion on this should be offline. Because at this point of time, getting into more detail on this part would not be feasible at this point of time. There is a comment from anonymous attendee and can we watch the recording video of the webinar? Just for your benefit and for benefit of all participants here, I would like to mention that all O F I S public hearings, conferences and public events. For last several years are now available on O F I S YouTube channel. You can always go to your YouTube channel and try to find the, the events according to the dates. We are trying to find some solution and probably will be working with some, some like partners. To better arrange the, all the video materials that are available, but even this event is being recorded and live streamed on the. But even this event is being recorded and live streamed on the, on the, on the YouTube channel of AOFI and is automatically remains available on the YouTube channel. So this is, Insha Allah, will be available. As soon as it completes, it will be available on YouTube. Just to reconfirm with my team, because it is done all the time, but just to reconfirm that this is happening this time as well. Sisters, just to make sure that this is being streamed live.
Uh, brother, today there was an error going live, but I spoke with I T team, they are resolving it.
Okay. It could be recorded, the recorded version should be uploaded immediately, but it is a policy that all of these are going live and this should not happen again Sister, okay? We should get it in advance please. Thank you very much, thank you very much for this and please make sure that as soon as this session is completed, we upload the video. Okay, so the next question is about, about, Brother Saifullah Azad has put in some of the questions which he is like, you know, requesting something in advance. If I go and answering those questions, it would be like, you know, it would be, it would be like, you know, uh, missing some of the context and some of the people won't be able to understand. So Brother Muhammad Saifullah Azad, I would, I would say that most of your questions will be answered during the session. Uh, if you are just asking about these explanations, just hold, hold on with us. And we'll see towards the end if any of your question is not answered by that time. So I'm not answering your questions right now, I'm just keeping them towards the end. Uh, there, there is comment from Brother Hamid Rahmatov. Assalamualaikum wa rahmat wa alaikum assalam. Can we get the, okay, sorry, earlier it was appearing with as anonymous attendee, now you have put in your name. Thank you very much and welcome. Uh, we have come, some, certain comments from Deekh Umar Khalif about, about the, some of the, some of the general concerns and general questions. My, my apologies that like, you know, since those questions are very general in nature and are not related to today's discussion. I will be skipping them for now. I know that we have limited time. And we'll, I'll try to manage the time towards the end if possible to answer these questions. Uh, but my first approach will be to answer the questions which are related to today's discussion only. Uh, Brother Saifullah Azad, your questions are related to today's discussion. Almost all of them, Insha Allah, will be answered when you post. But I just don't want to jump, like you know, jump on those topics right now. We have comment from Sister Rahma Saeed Muhammad. Assalamualaikum sir, can I have email? I can reach you through schedule online interview with Nigeria. Uh, okay, you can just send me an email. Anybody can approach me all the time at oansari@aufi.com. Uh, Sister Haura, can you kindly put my email address in the chat window also so that anybody who want to approach me directly, they can approach me. Uh, Insha Allah, I'll try to be available to all of you when you approach me, subject to time availability. If the time doesn't permit, for sure I will get you connected to some other relevant colleagues, Insha Allah. Okay, so we move ahead now with the, with the definitions. Now, some of the questions that were raised will be answered now. Uh, back-end discount. Back-end, okay, let's be clear. When, when you have an open-ended fund, which means that there is a, a unit purchase and unit encashment possible every moment. It can be on, or immediate, or it can be with a couple of days notice, but this is all available. In that situation, most of the institutions have either a front-end back-end load or front-end back-end fee. The load, the front, like you know, there is front-end load or back-end discount or front-end fee or back-end fee. Now, back-end is, let me first take the front-end fee. Front-end fee is the fee payable to the investment manager. Now, the point is that difference between the load or premium, premium and discount, is that we use the term load, we use the term premium, so we have used the term premium here. Uh, because front-end back-end load is the term used normally, but we have used it as front-end premium and back-end discount to clarify that more clearly. Now, we are saying that if that is taken by the investment manager, it is front-end fee. If it is attributable to the fund itself, then it will be front-end premium or what we generally call that, front-end load. On the back-end side, now front-end is when somebody comes and purchases, when somebody comes and want to purchase a, when somebody comes and purchases a, a unit, it will be front-end. If a fee is due at that point of time, that attributes to the investment manager, that is front-end fee. If there is a difference or a, or a premium that is charged at that point of time attributable to the fund itself, then it is front-end premium. So front-end fee is the fee payable to investment manager as charged when incoming investor normally competed on the basis of N V of such investment in case of an I I. Being an open-ended I A. Front-end premium is the premium if any on amount of investment charged to an incoming investor against N V of such investment applied in case of an I I being an open-ended I I, which is attributable to the equity or quasi-equity as applicable. Back-end discount is the discount on redemption of investment by an outgoing investor against net asset value of such investment applied in case of an I I. Being an open-ended I A which is attributable to the equity or quasi-equity as applicable. Back-end fee is the fee payable to the investment manager as charged to an outgoing investor normally competed on the basis of N V of such investment in case of an I A. Now, let me just take you to, to the NAV differential definition here. NAV differential in the specific context of the such open-ended I Is that maintain a nominal value of units as statutory capital is an account, being a component of quasi-equity used to record element of undistributed comprehensive income loss concluded in net asset value of units and issued during the period less element of undistributed comprehensive income loss included in the redemption value of units as redeemed during the period. So NAV differential applies in some type of investment funds, investment, open-ended investment funds, where a nominal capital is maintained. There are some open-ended funds which do not maintain, maintain a, maintain a, uh, a, a nominal value of units. So for example, if you start with a nominal value of unit as one B D per unit and you maintain the nominal value, then NOF differential is applied as a component of equity to identify the net differential between the opening versus today's position. So this is one angle of accounting that was not addressed. And again, this does not apply to all type of institution, but in certain type of, like you know, certain institutions, it's something material and some basic accounting guidance was needed on this part. Similarly, accounting guidance was needed in case of open-ended funds for the front-end fee, front-end, uh, front-end premium, back-end fee and back-end discount, et cetera. So we have covered these requirements here. Uh, I think some of the questions are answered now here. So let me go back, I can see couple of more questions coming. No, these are just comments and, uh, my LinkedIn, my LinkedIn is just easy, you just find with my name, you will find it easily. Uh, some people have asked for that, so that's okay. And my email address will be available. Uh, like you know, on the chat window, I believe sisters might have been available already. I just mentioned it already. Okay, so Brother Saifullah Azad, I think couple of our questions are answered now. Some of your, a couple of questions that were related to front-end fee and, and load and, and this NAV differential, I think we have answered those questions already. Uh, the question about quasi-equity is, is important. So let me just go to the definition of quasi-equity now. Let me go to the definitions one by one in which we will address the quasi-equity also. But again, I'm not going to define, I'm not going to define all of the, you know, it's all defined, but I'm not going to repeat all the definitions. So the capital transactions is about the inflows and flows and outflows of the capital, of the capital that is units or share capital itself. Uh, then we have an important, investment manager can be the manager under Wakala Bilis Tasmar or Mudarba. Uh, but it functions in a fiduciary capacity, not as, and, and like you know, for its own, its own control purposes. This is like, you know, clarification from accounting and other perspective. Uh, issued value of unit is the cumulative value against which shares units of I Is are subscribed by the investors against cash or through reinvestment of distributed profits and including and excluding NAV differential. Then we have, NAV per share and unit. And now, now in normal I F Is, we are more concerned with the earning per share. And earning per share is required according to IFRS and we also require earning per share to be disclosed. We have not gone in detail, but FAS one requires earning per share to be disclosed. But due to the nature of Islamic financial institution, Islamic investment institutions, it's important in most of the cases that NAV is disclosed and that's why we clarify. Open-ended triple I in the specific contextual standard is an triple I is an I I which investors contractually and by virtue of regulatory requirements have a right to execute capital transactions, particularly the right to redeem their investment at all, all, all the time on and over the counter basis. This is a very important definition because a lot of investment funds are actually open-ended and hence this definition is very important. Coming to quasi-equity. I let, this definition is there in AOFI framework and FAS one and this is one of the fundamental differences that AOFI has with IFRS. So let me first read this definition and then explain in the context of this standard how this is important. Quasi-equity in the general context is an element of the financial statement that represents participatory contributions received by an institution on a profit sharing or participatory, participation basis. It has primary characteristics of equity. Now, what are the primary characteristic of equity? That it shares the underlying asset. So in case of loss, unless negligence, misconduct or breach of contractual programs is proved, the institution is not liable to return the lost funds to the fund providers and the fund providers share the residual interest in the underlying asset of business. So liability is guaranteed, it is not guaranteed. And the underlying assets are shared by the investors. Certain characteristics of a liability, that is, it has a maturity or output option of redemption liquidation. This is where IFRS says that any financial instrument meeting this definition is a liability. They don't have a classification of quasi-equity. So they say that it may have some characteristics of equity, but if there is output option or redemption or liquidation, technically it becomes a liability, which means, which means all open-minded funds under IFRS do not have equity, they technically have quasi-equity because there is a port option. So the IFRS considers it liability. We consider it quasi-equity because of port option or maturity. Certain specific features that is the right of the fund providers are limited only to the underlying assets of business and not on the whole of the institution, as well as they do not have certain rights associated only with the owner's equity. Explanation. In the special context of this standard, quasi-equity includes the units held by investors that have a fixed maturity before liquidation of the I A itself. Output options of redemption, for example, in case of most open-ended I I Is. While on the contrary, the shares or units held by the investors do not have a fixed maturity before liquidation of the I A itself, output option of redemption shall be considered equity. It may generally be presumed that one, an I I having a fixed liquidation plan or fixed maturity shall have only quasi-equity. Two, an open-ended I I shall have only quasi-equity. Number three, certain open-ended I Is may have more than one clause of quasi-equity, for example, in former sub-funds. And number four, any other I I shall generally have equity and may additionally have quasi-equity. Like banks have equity of shareholders, quasi-equity of investment account holders, et cetera. So some of the I I Is may have, like there can be a venture capital fund, a venture capital institution that may have equity as shareholders and it may have quasi-equity in form of certain co-mingled investment funds, venture investment, venture capital investment funds, things like that. So this is important. One, most of the I I Is that have a fixed liquidation plan. It's a fund having a life, like there is a REIT with a five-year life, there is a REIT with a seven-year life. There is a mutual fund with five years' life. There is a venture capital fund with ten years' life. They all, because of having a fixed maturity, will be considered generally quasi-equity. Open-ended I I will by default be quasi-equity. Because they have a put option in the hand of the holders of the units that he can get, come and get the units in cash. Three, certain open-ended I Is may have more than one class of equity, quasi-equity because they may have sub-funds, like some pension funds. Some Islamic pension funds may have multiple classes. Multiple sub-funds. And yes, there can be some REITS and other type of funds also that may have sub-funds. There can be some venture capital funds, private equity funds that may have sub-funds. So they may have more than one classes of quasi-equity. And generally other triple I's will be having equity. However, some of them may have quasi-equity in addition to that. Complicated, not easy, not clear? Any questions? Okay, I think now I answered some of the earlier questions as well, like Brother Musa Kabir about the quasi-equity I clarified. So I clear up your question. Uh, Brother Saifullah Azad about quasi-equity, I cleared it. Okay, so other than that, we just have, like you know, almost all questions are answered except for those which are out of scope for current standard. We'll see if towards the end we have time to answer them. But I doubt, because now we are at, we have nearly forty-five minutes left and it means that we won't be able to complete it. Now Sharia principles and rules is the standard definition that we use in our governance standards and the framework. Sharia principles and rules comprise, Sister Haura, Sister Saira, please make a note of it. I think we should be taking Sharia principles and rule definition from the framework, not from the Sharia compliance function standard. But just let's discuss it, because for accounting standard, we should first take it from the framework. Framework has the same definition, so the footnote reference, maybe we can keep both footnote references. Comprise the Sharia principles and rules defined by the following hierarchy. Number one, Sharia standard of AOFI. Number two, country Sharia regulation. Number three, central Sharia board rulings. Number four, AOFI accounting standards requirements that are related to Sharia. And number five, Sharia supervisory board group views. Trustee is like, you know, in addition to investment manager, at times we have a trustee that keeps, like you know, keeps the assets ring fast and safeguards the interest of both parties. So the trustee at times is relevant for this purpose or trustee definition has been included. Now, first thing is assessment. That what is your business model and what should be the right accounting policies? We have kept some options in that and that's why we need to have a quick view of this, this discussion, this, this business, business model assessment requirement. So an I I I shall initially assess business model which shall form the basis of selection, adoption and application of accounting policies and for applying significant judgments and estimates where applicable. Such accounting policies shall be adopted in line with the requirements of relevant AOFI phases unless contrary to a specific requirements of this, requirement of this standard. So generally, for example, if your business model is investing in Sukuk and shares, et cetera, normally you will apply FAS thirty-three requirements and will select a business model within FAS thirty-three. Although some specific requirement of the standard might be there. So for example, FAS thirty-three, for a lot of things, it just prefers generally amortized cost or allows amortized cost. for a lot of things, it just prefers generally amortized cost or allows amortized cost. But according to the business model of the investment fund, maybe amortized cost in some situation might not be relevant. And in some situation, it might be more relevant. So we'll have to find what is more appropriate according to our business model, but we need to refer to other standards as well as needed. In assessment of the business model, the expectations of the investors, particularly with regard to investment returns, distribution of profit and withdrawal of quasi equity shall be considered prime factors along with the investment motives and investment objectives of the IIs. So if I am investing as a private equity investor versus if I am investing in a Islamic investment fund which has a daily income plan. My investment objectives and return objectives are different. If I invest in Islamic equity fund, my investment objective might be different and my risk appetite might be different as compared to the investment that I make in Islamic money market fund or Islamic balance fund or Islamic uh capital protected fund, I mean capital protection is done in a different way, but like you know generally it's called capital protected fund, technically it's not protection of capital. But somehow we create a mechanism for that. So uh I think sis- sister Syrah, we should make make a note of it. I think with business model, we should talk about risk appetite here as well. I think at other places we talked about risk appetite. Here also, we should consider the business model expectation and risk appetite of the investors. Now, there is a rebuttable presumption that most IIIs unless proven otherwise have a business model that requires preparation of the financial statements on a fair value or as close as possible to fair value basis. However, any accounting policies to achieve the objective of fair valuation shall not be selected while compromising on Sharia principles and rules or the requirements of AOFI conceptual framework for financial reporting. For example, if an IAI enters into a Muraba transaction, it shall follow the requirement of respective AOFI FAS. Instead of applying finance fair value accounting and hence record receivables and revenues in accordance with the requirements of respective AOFI FAS with prohibits carrying Muraba receivables at fair value. So this is just one example, but there can be other examples as well that while there is a rebuttable presumption that investment entities shall prepare the whole of financial statements on fair value as or close to fair value basis. But at times, some of the things are not allowed by Sharia to be kept of fair value and there can be some of the investments that may justify amortized cost basis. If daily encashment is not expected and the business model includes carrying some of the amortized cost investments for a longer period of time, which average out the return over a period of time. Again, we we are not concluding, we are simply saying you need to assess these factors. But generally speaking, investment entity purpose, because there are encashments and everything, fair value accounting generally would be more appropriate. But it is a rebuttable proof presumption, which means that that it can be proven otherwise that the business model of a specific Islamic investment institution is different. For example, some Islamic pension funds may have a long term investment plan, which means that they may carry like five, seven, ten years long term investments, even some Sukuk or even uh real long term Sukuk in the market now up to twenty years by the sovereign Sukuk, so ten years, twenty years. So so that may be carried at amortized cost. We again depending on the business model of the of the institution, the business model of the even even the subfund if it applies, that will be applicable. I can still see a large number of people there but no more questions coming up, which means I hope that it's not too difficult because there are two approaches, either it is too good to understand, it's too easy or I am too good to explain it or otherwise uh it's too complicated and people are unable to understand. I think uh the most of the people who belong to the industry, they understand it all better. Now, assessment of the business model. In certain circumstances where an open ended IAI is required to or has practice of publishing NAV per unit on a frequent basis earlier than the end of the annual financial reporting period or respective interim financial reporting periods such as IAI shall apply the requirements related to interim financial reporting as per respective AOFI FAS and so far as applicable. So we have FAS forty one on interim financial reporting. So if you are publishing your NAV on a month, on a weekly basis, at times even on a daily basis, you need to apply the interim financial reporting standard as practical as possible to determine the NAV that you are reporting. Accounting policies for specific matters related to certain areas. So again, general accounting policy shall be in line with the framework and in line with the FAS one. But there are some specific transactions, again, some accounting policies will be according to like you know the respective standard. So if there is a uh capital, a Muraba transaction for uh like you know commodity Muraba Tavaru transaction for capital protection or if there is a Murabha transaction or Ijarah transaction in the fund or or other type of transactions. So these can be done like you know according to respective standard, but there are some unique accounting issues that are to be addressed here in this section. So there is a rebuttable presumption that units of an open ended IAI shall always qualify to be accounted for as quasi equity. Accordingly, an open ended triple I shall develop appropriate accounting policies for accounting for issuance and redemption of its units in line with the requirements of this standard, particularly including the accounting policies with where applicable respect of front end fee, front end premium, NAV differential, where applicable, back end fee and back end discount. Especially the accounting policy for NAV differential where applicable shall be developed reflecting its nature in line with the contractual agreement arrangements and the requirements of the standard. In most cases, NAV differential is not recognized as income of the IAI being considered as part of the capital transaction and shall rather constitute a part of the quasi equity along with the issued values of unit. Trade date versus settlement data accounting. Accounting policy in respect of selection of trade date versus settlement data accounting shall be developed consistently, applied and adequately disclosed in line with Sharia principles and rules. Normally, Sharia principles and rules will require for settlement data accounting, but in some of the situations, the criteria of Sharia would be met in case of trade date accounting as well. So you you need to adopt a policy in line with Sharia principles and rules. Recognition of fee and share attributable to investment manager. Accounting policies in respect of accounting for the fee share of public profit attributable to the investment manager shall be developed consistently, applied and adequately disclosed in line with Sharia principles and rules in the following manner. In case of investment manager having Wakala Bilis Tasmar or any of the form of Wakala or Services Ijarah based arrangement, the accounting policy for recognition of fee payable to investment manager shall be determined in line with requirements of respective AOFI FAS, that is FAS thirty one. Duly consideration that considering the requirements for accounting for variable contingent and incentive fee as contained therein. Uh in case of an investment manager having a Mudarba based arrangement, the accounting policy for the recognition and share of uh recognition of share of profit payable to the investment manager shall be determined in line with the requirements of respective AOFI FAS which is being finalized now. Uh probably will be finalized before this one or alongside this one uh on the profit on the prospective ventures. Duly considering the requirements for accounting for variable contingent tiered and incentive shares of profit as contained therein. I think we have couple of questions coming up now. Okay, somebody said it's too good. Thank you very much uh for your kind comment. Now, what is the front end premium? The question comes again. So the point is that if I have today NAV, it's an open ended fund, today my NAV is BD one point five. And according to the policy, I issue it at a premium. So it what will happen that anybody who comes in, he will pay one point five five BD per unit. Now, what will happen that this additional point five, point zero five will be front end premium and it will be part of the capital transactions and eventually it it will be kept in the equity. Uh and it will, if it is a nominal value is maintained, then it will be through NAV differential, otherwise directly it will go to the unit value. On the other hand, there can be situations where it will, he will not pay one point five five, he will pay one point six. Out of which point zero five goes to the premium, front end premium, which means that this goes to the fund, not to the manager. But at times, some fee is also paid to the manager at that point of time, that is front end fee. So if whatever over and above is paid is according to the contractual arrangement going to the fund, it is front end premium. If according to the contractual arrangement, it is going to the investment manager, it is front end fee. Now, if I am a unit holder and I exit from the funds, some funds have a policy that when I exit, if my fund value is one point five today, NAV value is one point five, when I take exit, I exit at one point four five. And that is back end discount. And that discount I give to the, for the exit purposes. So there is a, again, a point zero five gain that goes in the fund. If it remains in the fund, it is called back end discount according to this standard. Normally, we use the term front end load, back end load. Normally, the term is like this. But technically, we have used the term premium and discount to distinguish that. But premium and discount is what is going to the fund itself and fee is what is going to the investment manager. So since investment managers additional function are involved at the time of booking of investment or engaging the investment, so in that situation, if there is a fee paid to them, that fee goes to the investment manager and that is recorded as front end fee and back end fee. In different markets, there are different terms used for that. We would love to have comments from the experts from the market if they can kindly provide some comments is with regard to what term would they would prefer on that part. Uh but there is a comment from brother Rahul Chitrvedi. Is FAS thirty one related to fee accounting rule for all structures or only specific? FAS thirty one is related to Wakala Bilis Tasmar Investment Agency. So it has a section on recognition of fee from Wakala, which include fixed fee, variable fee, contingent fee and incentive base fee. All these are like sort of covered there with regard to how and what what time they will be recognized. So for example, contingent fee you need to recognize when the contingent event meets. Incentive fee is recognized when the profit, profit according to the calculation is done and then there is an incentive calculated. So that in line with Sharia, what is the right approach of recognizing fee on both hands by the wakil and the mokil, that is the agent and the principal, that is covered in FAS thirty one. This is what a dear brother I was mentioning that we have not repeated everything contained in different standards. There is a section in Wakala standard, there is a section in Mudarba standard about addressing different type of fee, how they are to be accounted for. And this is where we actually have, instead of repeating, we have just clarified this part. Next comment is from a very dear brother, a very brother, very close to my heart, brother Handamir Nus- Nusret Khairif from Islamic Development Bank Group. Brother Handamir, thank you very much for being with us. There are investment manager fee and custodian fee. So how we shall account for both type of fee? Custodian fee, we have used the term trustee, sister Syrah, please make a note of it that the custodian we should mention that in certain markets, it's you, we have used the term trustee, but we should mention that in some markets, the term fiduciary or the firm term custodian is used. So I think we should clarify this thing in the standard. Uh about the fee for, a fee for custodian, uh investment manager, brother Handamir, let me read first your question and then try to answer. There are investment manager fee and custodian fee, so how shall we account for both type of fee? For example, investment manager deduct fee straight from the NAV value, in that case it adds some differential in the NAVs and not separate line item, this correct accounting treatment. So first thing, brother Handamir, custodian fee is to be paid as an expense out of the fund. Or or at times as an expense of the investment manager as well depending on the agreement. But normally, it is an expense of the fund. It will be recorded like a normal expense. I don't think that we have covered the custodian or trustee fee part, but sister Syrah just make a note of it. We may consider whether we need to address the issue of trustee fee and also the disclosure of the trustee fee. Uh thank you very much, brother Handamir, for reminding us about this. So just consider the custodian fee as a expense. However, the the fee of the investment manager, if it is not the front end fee, front end fee directly goes to him, back end fee directly goes to him. But the the normal fee, if it is Wakala arrangement, the normal fee, if it is a fixed fee, then also it will be accrued on accrual basis. But if it is a tiered fee, if it is a contingent fee, if it is incentive base fee, all those situations that can be there for the fee, those are to be accounted for in line with the requirement of FAS thirty one where the triggering event or the timing of recognition of these fee is defined. And it is defined for both hands, that is the fund as well as for the uh fund manager. Uh so 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 that part, we don't need to repeat, but I believe it's very well defined in that one. But with regard to the trustee fee, I believe it will always be recorded as expense according to the contractual arrangement. Thank you very much, brother Handamir, for your question. We have a comment from sister Ghazala Galib Khan. Front and fee may be deemed as a commission paid to the manager, right? What is the Sharia justification of paying the premium towards the fund? Okay, uh good point, very good point. Uh while we are not having a Sharia standard here, but uh still still it's a good point. So let's first go first part. First part that front and fee may be deemed as a commission paid to the manager, right? Yes, absolutely right. You are absolutely right to the point that some institutions consider it as a commission, but let me mention, it also depends because at times it's a commission and at times it's a documentation and service fee also. So it can be material, maybe in case of pension, it may be material. But in case of normal funds, it may not be material, generally it may be very minor. And in some situation, it can be representing a commission that is the services against selling the units. But in some cases, it may be considered as a documentation and administrative charges for booking a new investment and managing the investment part. So yes, commission element is there, but it depends on the contractual arrangement between the investment manager and the investment fund that what is the approach towards charging this one and the customer needs to be know knowing it, it should be properly disclosed that this amount is a commission or a documentation fee, but it is a fee paid to the investment manager, its disclosure is a must. Okay, part one of your question, thank you very much, very good question, I hope I clarified it. The second part is what is Sharia justification of paying the premium towards the fund? Okay, let's take an example, sister. Let's assume you are already doing a business and you are doing well. Now you invite me that I can become a partner in your business. So your business current fair value is one hundred and you allow me that I can come for like you know as a partner for ten. When I come as a partner for ten, it means that I am acquiring a proportionate share of your investment that is already there in this investment pool. Now, according to Sharia, any value that is mutually agreed between me and you at this point of time is acceptable except for except for that fund comprises only of receivables. Again, the new Sharia standard fifty nine allows that this is specific, like you know, if if it's an ongoing business, then it has goodwill and others also. So in that situation, if it is just a pool of assets, then I cannot do this investment with you in case of receivables and anything other than the receivables par value. But if it is a running business, then any value that I accept between me and you like you know as a as a investment value to purchase the units is acceptable as per Sharia. So that is, as per Sharia, it is allowed. Now, it is a premium for allowing me to be a part of business, that is the approach. Similarly, when I exit from the fund, so after after six months, I say, no, I want to exit from this fund. Now assume that my unit value at that point of time is one or two instead of one, one hundred, like you know, because whatever I invested based on that. So it is a possibility that if it is pre-agreed, that whenever I take exit, uh, the mutual agreement for that exit price will be based on a, for example, a two percent adjustment as a back-end discount. So from Sharia perspective, it is permissible because it's a sale transaction at both hands. When I enter, it's a sale transaction, when I exit, it's a sale transaction. And if we mutually agree that the, this formula will be applied for this sale price at both hands, then it is permissible from Sharia perspective. Is it fair? Again, Sharia at times allow you that because whatever you have between mutual agreement between Muslims is accepted to be justified by Sharia because obviously there has to be commercial substance to that. But yes, it may, there may be justification because it's a running business. Uh, so there can be some justification of some gain element coming to the existing shareholder, uh, existing unit holders if new, uh, uh, or unit holders come in. Similarly, if somebody gets out, uh, obviously there is some fairness in that element as well that they give a discount on getting out. So this is again, uh, for sure, there is no Sharia objection on that. On the fairness part, yes, I believe it's fair if it is reasonable. If it is not reasonable, it's not fair. So if you say we will charge you ten percent if you exit, maybe I believe personally it's not fair. If you say we charge twenty percent if you come in, maybe I personally believe it's not fair. So the, if the fairness element is there, according to the business norms and according to expectations and again, fairness element, just keep in mind, anybody who exits means that the unit, uh, you, uh, units that are in cash against which you might need to sell the, sell the assets as well and cashing the assets may at time result in losses as well. So maybe that is justified. Similarly, exit, uh, incoming one, uh, may be justifying a discount for some point of time because it is possible that for some time, it will remain in cash till the time you find a better investment opportunity and you may not find exactly equally return generating investment, eh, 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 opportunity. So maybe I have taken some time in answering both of your questions. But from Sharia perspective, there is no issue on that. Fairness perspective, obviously you have to be reasonable. And yes, a front-end fee is a commission part, thank you very much for raising very good questions, thank you very much. Brother Hondamir has just clarified on his part that asset, uh, asset management, A U M fee and performance fee. Uh, yes, yes, uh, brother, brother Hondamir, we, the, the FAS thirty-one defines all of it, so we'll just refer to uh, FAS thirty-one requirements or in case of Mudarba based funds, we'll refer to the requirements of the the, the other one. And the only point is that if differential in N A V not separate line item, it will depend. Uh, brother Hondamir, uh, if you are maintaining a nominal value of units, the fees will not be going to NAV differential. See, fee will be going directly to the investment manager. But if there is a front-end, uh, premium, that will impact the NAV value because there will be adjustment in NAV value. Today, I, I added cash and against cash, I issued units at different values, so it is there. But if you have a nominal value maintained for the unit, so for example, if you say your units are maintaining a nominal value of one B D or ten reals, in that situation, you will maintain the nominal value and difference goes to NAV differential. If you do not maintain the nominal value and then only the number of units are maintained, in that situation, NAV differential will not be showing up. Automatically, these premiums and discounts will be affecting the quasi-equity amount. I hope I am clear on this part, brother. Okay, so some more questions are coming up. Uh, so brother Hondamir, on the fee part, it is, it is to be recorded according to the respective standard but not impacting the equity directly because fee goes to the investment manager. And premium and discount go to the fund, so they impact the, uh, N A V and they impact the quasi-equity. Brother Mohammed Amin Dandia, again, a brother very close to me, brother Amin, welcome, Assalamualaikum. In the case of Murabah, the fee charged by the investment agent, would it be charged to revenue or fee income? Is this covered in the standard? Does the treatment change in case of syndicate? Uh, brother, brother, brother Amin, are you talking about commodity Murabah? And number one, number two, are you talking in the context of bank or you are contacting, talking in the context of the institution? If you just clarify a little bit, uh, I'll, I'll be able to answer it better. Uh, Sister Ghazala Galip Khan, okay, uh, my pleasure, my pleasure, you are most welcome. Brother Musa Kabir, Assalamualaikum As-salam. In investment fund, the valuation N A V on a daily basis, therefore the premium issue needs to be well clarified. Brother Musa, we tried to clarify it and I hope it is managed like, you know, easily. Uh, we have just clarified, but again, if you have any more specific comment where we can improve the practice, please let us know. We have comment from Mahavi Smile, uh, from Tadaman Bank Sudan, Assalamualaikum and welcome. Thank you for inviting us for the Vina. First, it's not important to mention the title of the standard in the preface in the second paragraph. Last line as second follows under the title Financial Reporting for Islamic Financial Institution Including Investment Funds. Thank you very much, we take a note of your point, we'll see if it needs to be removed. Sister Saira, Sister Hora, take a note of it, please, thank you very much. Second paragraph, number six, which other O F E standard to refer to. Uh, I think some of the explanations I have provided, some of the explanations are given in this standard itself as well. Like for some other accounting, like some of the things are as per FAS one, some things FAS thirty, some things may be FAS thirty-one, some things may be FAS one participatory ventures. So we have referred to multiple standards, even FAS thirty, so we have mentioned some of the things required. Uh, third appendix B on basis of conclusion, yes, that is correct. Normally basis of conclusion are published with the exposure draft, but at times we, uh, we compile basis of conclusion over a period of time. So we publish them with the final standard, yes, for sure, basis of conclusion will be coming up with the final standards, Insha Allah. Okay, brother Mohammed Amin Dandia has talked again about, uh, arrangement fee, upfront fee, et cetera, brother, but you are talking about in the context of bank or in the context of investment institution. But in a nutshell, if we are talking about a Murabah transaction on the asset side of an investment institution, all these will be considered expense according to the respective standard that we need to apply FAS twenty-eight on that. Thank you very much, brother Amin, I hope it will be clear. Even if, uh, you, you clarified that is in the context of the bank, but even if it is in the context of an investment entity, because some investment entities may have a Murabah or commodity Murabah transaction, so this applies there as well. Thank you very much for being with us. Uh, brother Musa Kabir has mentioned a clarification on my point that the new investor might pay higher than existing investor depending on the market forces. Yes, that is correct, in some situation you would even give discount. Like you know, my, in my experience, at time the institution, the, you know, if they want to attract the investors, at time they waive the front-end fee and front-end load of front-end premium, they waive it for some of the customers and they, uh, at time they charge even between the fund transfers and at time they waive it for the fund transfers. So this is big, uh, depending on market forces and at times in order to attract investments, investors. Uh, or to be honest, I am not a big investor. So in order to accommodate some investors, they want to promote, they want to bring in investors, at time they waive these things as well. Thank you very much, brother. Brother, brother Amin Dandia clarified again, Murabah or Tavruk, brother, this, although for Tavruk, we don't have a standard right now, there was exposure draft that was developed, but now we are publishing a discussion paper shortly. Uh, so, uh, for now, FAS twenty-eight addresses only Murabah, it doesn't address Tavruk, but till that time, Tavruk's special standard is not available, guidance may be sought from FAS twenty-eight. Okay, I think we should move on. It's a, now it's turning into a very interesting session and we are not even the halfway done and it's almost time. This is one issue that I requested to couple, to my colleagues earlier as well, that, uh, that, uh, normally the financial accounting standards need two and a half to three hours. Now I have to be a bit quick in explaining what is there because, uh, I will not take any questions for now. Uh, I think we are supposed to end in fifteen minutes, so it's, it has to be quick. So recognition of expenses, et cetera, we talked about already. General presentation of financial statement, we already mentioned that financial accounting standard part, uh, one, part one will apply uh, on all standard except for any specific requirements which are contained in this standard. The financial reporting set, uh, complete set of financial statement shall, shall include statement of financial position or statement of net assets, which will be the same. Uh, we are not saying that statement on net asset will be different, but the presentation style might be different, but the contents will remain the same. Statement of financial activities or statement of income and other comprehensive income, again, it's a presentation style, but it will remain the same. It, it will be a single statement preferred for banks, normally we have two statement, but here we are suggesting a single statement unless regulation require a two statements, otherwise we are suggesting one statement under FAS one. You have a choice of having one or two statements, but here we are preferring to have one statement, that is statement of financial activities as the primary wording for that. But you can have two statements in line with FAS one if required by the respective regulator. Statement of cash flows, statement of changes owners equity, statement of changes in quasi-equity, notes comprising significant accounting policies and other explanations. Uh, then minimum contents or, or other contents of financials, uh, financial statement as per FAS one shall be followed except for specific requirements here. So in the statement of financial position, NAV should be disclosed, NAV per unit, NAV per share per unit at the end of financial reporting period shall be disclosed on the face of the financial statements of financial position of an open-ended I I. Mandatory requirement is for open-ended I I. I think there was a discussion here and we would like to have a specific question to you, you can provide comments now or later, that NAV should be needed for all type of I I's or, or open-ended I I only. But we believe that open-ended I I must be a requirement, but others, obviously there is comment that we need from your side. Disclosure shall be made of bifurcation between undistributed accumulated comprehensive profit loss being realized and realized. Because of the nature of the funds and they're in, uh, they're mostly being on fair value basis, the realized versus unrealized uh, undistributed comprehensive profits and losses and distributable and non-distributable, that impacts the disclosure requirements and that is very important. In case of, uh, we are saying that EPS shall be disclosed for all I I's excluding open-ended I I's in accordance with the requirements of respective O F E phases, that open-ended I I's, NAV is a must. For all other I I's, E P, EPS or EPA, earning per unit. Uh, Sarah, I think we need to make mention disclosure of earning per share or bleak earning per unit. Just, I think in, in the discussion it was there, but it's not in the final, final version, so just keep a note of it. Disclosure shall be made of bifurcation again, net comprehensive income or loss for the period realized and realized versus distributable and non-distributable. This is very important that, uh, the current period as well as the accumulated gains, losses which are realized and realized and which are distributable and non-distributable should be disclosed properly. There is a statement of changes in quasi-equity. For the banking, we have asked for a statement of income and expenses attributable to quasi-equity. But here we are asking a different statement, that is statement of changes in quasi-equity. Uh, it will be having the value of units and undistributed income and accumulated losses at the beginning of the period and proceeds for emissions of units, including number of units issued, uh, front-end premium, NAV differential, et cetera. Uh, payment on redemption of units, number of units, back-end discount and NAV differential impact. Uh, net comprehensive income and loss on the financial reporting period, distribution of investors during the period, value of units and distributed income, et cetera, end of the period. So this is a statement of changes in quasi-equity for open-ended funds and other type of Islamic investment institution that have, have a quasi-equity. If there are more than one class of quasi-equity, then there should be appropriate disclosure through columnar presentation or through notes. Uh, the, the, the following a transaction should be disclosed, the front-end fee and back-end fee also should be disclosed. I think about the custodian part, we should also be disclosing, uh, in the, not in this section on the, uh, on the quasi-equity, but we should be asking in the, in the complete, uh, statement of financial activities, the custodian fee as well, custodian or trustee fee. And investments insofar as practicable, disclosure of complete movement of investment of individual investment instrument shall be made. Now, this is not a requirement for normal I F I's, but this is a requirement for Islamic investment institution considering their nature. So if they don't have two thousand investments, obviously it is not possible. But a, as far as practicable disclosure of complete movement should be done here. And considering the business model of the I I, its additional disclosure should be made in respect of investments by disclosing portfolios, subcategories, et cetera, in line with the disclosure requirements of respective O F E phases. Then disclosure of the value of investment, if it is not available with investment custodian and the reasons thereof. Uh, investment, again, just noting, Sarah, I think here we are using the term custodian, other place we have used the term trustee, we need to align it, please. Any investment used as a pledge during the trade or settlement of any exposure during the period during the same stock exchange and if any investment is recognized in the book, a book of account, but custody is not yet received. So these are also to be kept. I think custodian and trustee, we have used in different meaning. Here, trust, trust, custodian, we have used in the meaning of depositary company. Now we need to see, uh, because even trustee becomes a depositary company or custodian becomes trustee in some cases, uh, particularly in case of the stock market-based investment, so I think we just need to clarify that part. Sub-funds, uh, in case of I I's having some fund disclosure shall be made with regard to each material sub-fund as if it's an operating segment of I A in line with the respective O F E FAS and FAS as well as segment reporting I F R S. Investment manager and trustee as related parties, so all the transactions with investment manager and trustees, considering them related party should be disclosed. Uh, risk-related disclosure should be done very appropriately in line with requirements of FAS one. In addition to, in addition to the risk requirements of FAS one, these are more specific risk-related disclosure related to open-ended. Because open-ended is subject to significant liquidity risk in addition to the normal risks. So for example, you have a, you have a open-ended fund having a portfolio where if you in cash all the investments today to in cash your units, this will impact like you know significantly, uh, like you know, your investments and things. So that is a reason that like banks or other financial institution, any open-ended I I or any, any other, any other, like you know, even the quasi-equity. I think, uh, I think, uh, brother, brother Faisal and sister Saira, we can take a note of it. It might be even relevant for, uh, you know, close-ended I I's or other type of I I's which have quasi-equity which may, which is subject to the similar risk. So, so the investments that cannot be liquidated immediately, like for example, if you have investment in Sukuk at, at a mortgage cost for, and, and the significant units are, uh, uh, are like, you know, in cash today. So you might need to dispose of this investment which may result in a loss situation. So these are additional significant liquidity risk, so I'm not going in detail, but risk, these risks and the mitigation techniques are to be used. And I think that, uh, any, uh, any quasi-equity fund of, uh, of a I I which is not open-ended should also be subject to the same risks. And accordingly, all these disclosures need to be made. The effective date of this standard is planned to be one January twenty twenty-seven. And, uh, with that, I think, uh, we, we have like, you know, a couple of transitional provisions that, uh, that if the I I's which have fixed maturity and they are like within two years, they are maturing, they may not need to change, uh, to the new standard, they can continue with the old FAS fourteen, but others are like there. One request to all the regulators who are present here who have not adopted our financial accounting standards, at the securities commissions, the stock exchanges who have not made it mandatory, we believe that this is high time. You can understand the value addition of this standard for the specific aspect of, uh, I, for I F I's and Islamic I I triple I's. So we suggest that you need to adopt this standard as, as soon as it is finalized along with, uh, the overall O F E framework to reflect the true nature of Islamic finance instruments. So with that, I think we will be probably coming up shortly with the expo, with the, with the technical release, uh, with the technical release on the Islamic investment funds, uh, where we, let you know that, uh, the, the illustrative financial statements will be covered, Insha Allah. So we have started working on that already, Insha Allah, we'll be coming, uh, by, by first, within first half of next year, Insha Allah, we hope we will be coming out with that. So with that, I stop sharing my screen and I just see how many questions are left here. Now there are a couple of new questions coming up, so in case of Sukuk transaction and Wakala structure and the assets are listed and listed share, this will be treated as tangible asset or non-tangible. Now there are a couple of new questions coming up. So in case of Sukuk transaction and a Vakali structure and the assets are listed and listed share, this will be treated as tangible asset or non-tangible asset. And in case of investment in Saudi-based Sukuk transactions. Saudi-based, do do other countries will be required to check the screening criteria for shares of such Sukuk transactions. Ha. I don't have a single answer to that. As A O F, we believe that the compliance with the Y O F standards is necessary. A O F Sukuk is standard number sixty-two, A O F Bel Then standard. They are very relevant. Sixty-two standard is not yet final, but the requirements that are contained, they're they're Sharia requirements. We all understand these are Sharia requirements. So so the so there are some of the things. That need to be considered. So for Sukuk, the tangibility criteria, we don't need to wait for Sukuk standard sixty-two because that is already contained in Sharia standard fifty-nine on sale of debt. So that needs to be applied. So if you are, assets are listed and unlisted Sukuk. I personally believe the further interpretation obviously need to be discussed, but that will not be considered as debt. So since these are not considered as debt, so we'll apply debt versus these assets. Now, one thing, if you say that shares are also having significant receivable portfolio. That will not apply because Sharia standard fifty-nine clarifies that. In case of shares of a company that is running business, in that situation, irrespective of the tangibility criteria, it is considered permissible. If if the activity and other criterias are met. So from that perspective, they will be considered as tangible asset. So if you apply this criteria, it will be considered tangible. However, when you talk about a country that does not adopt Y O F standard and you are sitting in a country that adopts Y O F standard. Then you need to apply specific like you know assessment. So you need to have your own Sharia board approval of that Sukuk. So what we are seeing is that Saudi is not adopting Y O F Sharia standard. So if you are sitting in UAE, if you are sitting in Bahrain, if you are sitting in Oman, if you are sitting in Pakistan. You are sitting in a country where Sharia standards of Y O F are applied. And you want to invest in a country where Y O F Sharia standards are not applied. For example, Malaysia, for example, Saudi. We believe, again, we respect their scholars, we highly like respect them. So we believe that if they have considered, would be Sharia compliant, but it would not be considered compliant. Of the Y O F Sharia standard if it doesn't meet the conditions, which means that. If you are sitting in a country, so forget about the country that we are talking about, it can be any country. If you are sitting in a country which adopts Y O F standards. Making investment in a country where Y O F standards are not applied. You need to see the criteria of Y O F Sharia standard and hence you need to see the specific approval of your own Sharia board on that. I believe UAE has given some flexibility on this part. I'm not aware of all the details, but I understand. But in a nutshell, the main point is that you need to see compliance and get approval of your Sharia board that this. Sukuk is as per Y O F Sharia standard, so we can invest in that. That is my understanding according to the current regulatory regime. Depending on the countries that adopt our standards mandatory or even in case of Baner is part of law, so you cannot. Uh you cannot rely on a fatwa of another country's Sharia board till that time. Your Sharia board does not confirm that it meets the Y O F Sharia standard. Now, anonymous attendee, again, we have noted that investment by unit holders in Sharia compliant funds is recorded on form receipt basis and subsequently the cheque is realized on the next day. Moreover, the benefits of the investment for the unit holder start to accrue on the date form is received. Rather than when the cash is realized in the fund. For the sake of clarity, please note the following example. Investor provides investment form along with cheque on twenty September, price of five hundred unit per. Since the fund is on form receipt basis, the client receive N A V on five hundred and simultaneously amount is withdrawn. I think uh the payment considerations. Are according to the agreement and actually we talked about trade date and settlement date accounting on the investment side. But I think this is important that we define the accounting on the quasi-equity and equity side as well on this part. So your point is very important. We do not want to dictate either of the situations. I believe Sharia accepts both situations. But I think that accounting policy in this respect need to be clarified. So thank you very much. I think. We use the trade days versus settlement date only on account asset side and we said that you need to adopt accounting policy as per. Y O F Sharia Sharia principles and rules. But I think based on your very important comment, we need to define this thing that accounting policy on this part according to the contractual obligations. Because this depends on contractual obligations and Sharia principles approved by your Sharia board. So there's on that you need to define the accounting policy. Uh just to mention, Y O F standard on quasi-equity mentions that if you have received the money on the. On the assumption that it will be invested on a future date, then till that time you keep it in a current account. This is a clarification already available on the quasi-equity standard. Maybe we need to keep a clarification similar to that in line with your comment here, clarifying that it should be according to accounting policy, but if. Yeah, like you know, if if the cheque is received and amount is not realized. Then uh again, the contract if you have signed, it will be according to the contractual obligation and I believe Sharia will not have an objection on that part. Thank you very much. It was a very good comment. Again, uh and when you use the term anonymous attendee, at time it's a confusion that there is only one person or a couple of persons. It will be highly appreciated if you can provide your name, please. Another comment by the same person because it's continuing in numbers. Moreover, since there is delay in realization of fund, the fund did not earn anything on two days. That is correct. I understand. That for two days you don't get any return. It's a very good example. Thank you very much. I think we have to address this one. Uh okay, this is brother Muhammad Noman. Please make all these comments, anonymous attendee comments, the later ones with the name of brother Muhammad Noman. Thank you very much. I think we are, we are three minutes above time already. So I think this is time we need to come to uh to 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 a close. Uh we have some comments as I mentioned earlier, uh which were not exactly. Uh as per scope of this standard, so we just like you know drop this ones. We have a comment from Sister Amina Bajabi, Shukran Jazakallah Khair. Thank you very much and thank you very much for being with us. It's a pleasure and it's a, you know, the success of these public hearings and the quality of the standard improvement is done only by your active participation. Thank you everybody for joining in. For with that, I would like to hand it over back to Sister Howrah and Sister Sarah to conclude. Uh for the session. Thank you very much.
Uh thank you, brother Omar. Miss Mishmuma Majid, the C E O of Mutual Funds Association of Pakistan, would like to deliver the closing remarks before we conclude.
Um thank you. Um on behalf of Mufab, we would like to express our sincere gratitude to A O I F I and all the distinguished participants here today. For the insightful discussions. The dialogue I've been hearing has been invaluable and it will help in advancing the development of these financial reporting standards for these Islamic investment institutions which include our investment funds. So we firmly believe that these standards will not only enhance transparency and investor confidence, but also bring in much-needed standardization and comparability across jurisdictions. Which is very vital for the global growth of Islamic finance. Uh so Mufab is committed in supporting A O I F I in its mission to establish globally recognized robust standards. That align with the Sharia principles as well as addressing the evolving needs of the industry. So by fostering this alignment and consistency across the regulatory frameworks, we can facilitate better cross-border collaboration. And ensure a more stronger resilient Islamic financial sector. So we look forward to our continued collaboration and contributing to this important initiative. Ensuring that these standards serve both regulatory as well as investor needs effectively. So thank you once again for providing us with this opportunity to collaborate and contribute. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you, Miss Mishmuma, and we are happy to have you today with us. Thank you very much, brother Omar, for the insightful presentation and the Q and A session. We would like to thank UAE Banks Federation and Mutual Funds Association of Pakistan, all the participants and all our colleagues here in A Y O F. Insha Allah, we see you again in the future in other public hearings on the standards, both in Arabic and English. Wassalamualaikum wa alhamdulillah.
Assalamualaikum and thank you everybody.
Wa alhamdulillah.
Thank you.